Alright, what is your name everyone? There's a couple more chairs behind that board over there if there's people who want them. Alright, good evening everyone. This meeting is a meeting of the Board of Education and Public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and it's not to be considered a public community meeting. There is time for public participation during the meeting as indicated on the agenda. And upon request of the superintendent, the district shall make reasonable accommodation for a person with disabilities to be able to participate in this meeting. I do want to just mention this is a special meeting tonight, we have a shortened agenda, so I assume everyone's here for public participation and that will be right away. First, we are gonna do a call just to see who is here.
Okay, trustee Al right here. Vice President Suar.
Oh here, shaking it up.
I know. President Ruder.
Here.
Those hurricanes.
Here.
Trustee Sapola here, then Brian Arnold is not here and Aigur Iser.
Okay, can we have a motion about the agenda please?
Um actually, I will move to amend the agenda to add an additional closed session, so that would be the third closed session to discuss a legal, a discussion on legal advice, but otherwise it would be better.
Do I have a second? Okay, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor to improve the agenda as amended with an additional closed session, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And we will move right to public participation. Um each speaker, each speaker is allotted a maximum of five minutes for a total of approximately thirty minutes unless otherwise notified. At this point in the meeting, those interested in making a public comment will be asked to raise their hands, so the time may be divided equally. Each speaker will be asked to announce their name, the district of residence, and indicate if they represent any organization or agency. No person may speak more than once on the same subject during a single meeting, nor yield their time to another speaker. The board does not, please note that the board does not respond to comments during the meeting. Those wishing to receive a personal response from the board or the superintendent must complete a public comment form available at the meeting entrance and on our website, so that we have your contact information. Can I just get a sense of how many people want to speak tonight? Okay, alright. Um we will stick to the five minute uh limit then, um and we will have a phone timer going, so um would anyone like to start? Are you gonna?
Yes.
Okay.
You need this now?
Uh that would be great.
Thank you. Suppose you need him to read. Okay, hello everybody. Um I just wanna give you a little bit of my background, so you can know where my insights are coming from as I speak.
Can you, I'm sorry, can you start with just your name, district of residence?
Yeah, my name is Chrissy Taylor and I'm from Dexter. And um I have a PhD in educational leadership and I've taught for fifteen years and I've been a school administrator for ten years. I've been a public school board member, just like you guys, for three years. And I'm certified in MASB, board members certified by the state as a superintendent and Title IX coordinator certified by Tula. I'm a mother of four boys, my oldest two were part of the winningest team in Dexter history. Reeves was the starting QB and Davis was the starting outside linebacker, go Dreads! My two youngest are freshmen and eighth grader here at Dexter. We have found a way to win every, everywhere we go. I come to this meeting tonight to encourage you as um as board members, because I've been in your seats before, um that there's always two sides of every story. When I sat in your seat as a board member ten years ago, um there was a mother that came in just like myself, I've never been on the side, I've only been on your side. It feels really weird on this side, um and the people who are gonna come speak in a little bit. Um there was a mother that came in with tears rolling down her face, um her kid got his first two teeth knocked out and I had no idea who she was. She was suing the school for her kid's two front teeth being knocked out. Um and when she came in crying, I was like, what is happening? I have no idea um what's going on here. Um there was an email that was from her and I was directed um not to look at it and not to respond to it. She came in and pointed to each of us on that day saying, shame on you, shame on you, shame on you, shame on you. And I, and I rode home and I was like just super embarrassed because I had no idea what was going on. Um and I'll never forget that board meeting and the look on that mother's face. Why didn't I do more? Why didn't I hear both sides of the story? Then I got my first letter to my own home from a lawyer with my name on it, then I paid attention. That was the last time I allowed anyone to tell me who or who not to talk to. Everyone gets to make their own decision, especially when elected by people in their community. As a board member, we started questioning several things. It allowed us to really ask what was going on and find out more of each side of the story. Catherine Kuzma has been an integral part of emailing my boys notes of encouragement through district games, regionals, and state semifinal games. Several teachers did this to both my boys Reeves and Davis. Catherine first emailed me to ask my permission that she could write my kids. I can send you any of those emails if you'd like to see that, because of again, there's two sides of every story. As an administrator, I looked through the lens of growth for my teachers. Was Mrs. Kuzma given a verbal warning? Was she given a written warning? What about a growth plan? I've walked beside many teachers as a tenured administrator, I always want the best for my teachers to succeed. Just recently, I was offered an associate superintendent position at a school double the size of Dexter. The school was up north and I didn't wanna move our boys yet again, because they moved three different districts because of work. We wanted to stay in Dexter because the amazing teachers like Catherine Kuzma and the amazing community surrounded in this area. Who love and care for our children. I encourage each of you to ask both sides of the story. Love never fails, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Jenna Cooper and I'm coming before you tonight as a parent of younger children in this district and also a clinical social worker and therapist in the community. I know the value of safety, empowerment, encouragement, and consistency, and these are all at the core of Mrs. Kuzma's character and teaching. Last summer, my kids both had the privilege of being coached by Mrs. Kuzma in the recognized basketball camp. The impact her positive encouraging words had on my kids and the level of organization and content she provided far exceeded our expectations. The written reports that each child brought home at the end of camp will forever be treasured. She clearly went above and beyond, I can only imagine how detailed her lesson plans must be in her classes. I'm sure it wasn't easy for her to give up a week of her summer break with her family to run this camp, but she did and our children were blessed by it. I'm also sure it wasn't easy for Mrs. Kuzma to go into school early, two days a week, to learn the Iron Dred program and to attend DCA meetings. I can't imagine taking consistent time to do that with three young kids at home, but she did. Because it was important for her as an educator and as a support to her students, again, another way she showed consistency, dedication, growth, and encouragement. Sending written communication must have also been very time consuming, but something consistent with her character, to help in any way she can to inspire students and athletes. As a therapist, I know kids need support, consistency, and encouragement. These things directly impact the mental health of our kids. In my role, I've worked with a lot of kids that struggle with getting these things and with adjusting problems in their learning environment. I've had Mrs. Kuzma's name mentioned not as a problem, but as a safe person, a trustworthy person, and someone who truly cares about her job and her class. When students have this awareness, you know she's doing what should be making administration proud. One of my biggest concerns is the impact this case has had on students and the community that supports, appreciates, and is very proud of the work that Mrs. Kuzma has done. A lot of the talking that's been going on doesn't seem to add up. A lot of people have lost sleep and have had increased anxiety over this. As a therapist with a trauma specialty, I felt sick hearing from parents that Mrs. Kuzma was removed from her class in front of students and escorted out of the building. To have a well-respected ethical person that kids look up to removed in front of them is unacceptable. Especially with the increase in amount of students right now that do not feel safe even going to school. I also wish you would have considered that there are a lot of children in this county that have been traumatized from being taken from their families. And trusted adults, and that seeing that and being exposed to this at school could have been very triggering and the last thing these kids deserve. This is a person who was once a student in this district and excelled, her ethical kind heart hasn't changed in decades. And you have educators now that remember her as a student and know her true character. She doesn't have a hurtful bone in her body, yet you placed her negatively in the spotlight. This is going to change how staff works with students going forward. They will be fearful of interacting with and encouraging students in the future. This will negatively impact your students and their role. It's very hard to understand how you can let go of someone with such a passion and genuine love for teaching, encouraging, and giving back to the community she was raised in. When my nine-year-old asked what I was working on today and I tried to explain to her that Coach Kuzma may be losing her job for sending positive messages to kids. She said to me, Mom, can't they just say you can't do that, then let her go back to class? I know she would stop, but why would they want her to? I think that's a really valid question in all of this. And that was a proud mom moment for me, that even my nine-year-old gets it. This was handled unfairly and I'm sure if there was any type of reasonable disciplinary action or warning, we wouldn't be where we are today. Your staff, our students, and the community know this is not fair. We shouldn't be abruptly losing an asset to our team, who I'm sure has never been in trouble with this district or any district in the past. Even one of your own administrators has told Mrs. Kuzma, if I ever have a daughter, I would want her to be just like you, one of your own administrators in this district. My hope is that you reconsider what is truly the right decision in this poorly handled situation. History speaks for itself and you shouldn't take away what's good for the future. If you, if you don't, you're going to leave your staff fearful to give encouragement in the time that our kids needs going forward.
Thank you very much.
My name is Joan Heft and I have been a Dexter resident of four years. In light of recent events, I'm here to speak to the character and integrity of Catherine Kuzma. I have had the blessing of knowing Catherine for over thirty years. We met in fourth grade, right down the hallway here in this school. We became fast friends. Work ethic and living with integrity were shared values even at the young age of nine. She quickly introduced me to the game of basketball and we were hooked. From fifth through twelfth grade, we spent thousands of hours, thousands of hours together at basketball court. Before school, after school, on the weekends and over the summers. Not only were we friends and classmates, but we were teammates too. I had countless opportunities to see Catherine's true colors. Not once in those four hundred years did I ever see her stray from her values, but she still will say to me today. Not once did she see, did she give me any reason to question her integrity or her motives. Her work ethic and compassion for others was immeasurable. These statements still ring true today. A lot of life has happened since then, we've become wives and mothers, she has cried with me in the valleys and joined the celebration of the summits. She truly and sincerely cares about me and my family and all the other families who heard stories from recently. It warms my heart that there are so many people who see and have been blessed by Catherine's true character, who have seen her true colors. This brings me to why I'm here speaking tonight. It burns me to my core that anyone would question her character, integrity, or motives. She is everything a parent wants and a teacher, community member, and friend. Middle school is hard, so when my son started seventh grade this year, I was overjoyed that he was gonna be in the same school as Catherine. Before school started this past fall, I told him if he ever needed anything without hesitation, go to Mrs. Kuzma and then she would be there for him. That with utmost certainty, she would be a trusted person. It shatters my heart that she's potentially been ripped away from him, my daughter, the students of Mill Creek, and the future students of this community. I hope that after tonight, we'll see clearly that monumental mistakes have been made recently and we'll do everything in our power to make right. Because our community does deserve the best, we deserve.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I've been on the run, so hopefully we can put this all together. Okay, my name is Holly Cabana and I have lived in Dexter for almost thirty years. Uh I was a math teacher at Dexter High School with a master's in education and also a coach for a handful of years before having kids of my own. Now, all three of my kids have gone all the way through Dexter Community Schools, um my youngest is a senior this year, so I've experienced a lot in the Dexter community for nearly three decades. My concerns revolve around the decisions that you've recently made regarding Catherine Kuzma and the process of enacting disciplinary measures with staff members. Catherine was actually a student when I was teaching at Dexter High School and I know that she chose to come back to Dexter to teach and raise her family in the community that she grew up in and loves. She wanted to be in Dexter to make a difference and she is one of the good ones. Two of my kids had Mrs. Kuzma for a teacher and they have very positive things to say about her, including my son, who's a D1 athlete and appreciated her encouraging support as he helped lead the Dexter football program to an unprecedented season in twenty twenty-two. He always felt comfortable with her and we appreciate that she went out of her way to be a positive mentor to so many um in her time as a teacher. And that's trying to be taken away from her and from our community, she has the exact qualities that I appreciate in a teacher. She's committed, caring, encouraging, holds students accountable, someone who goes above and beyond to try to be a positive influence to her students. So my questions to you are as follows. Did administration meet with Mrs. Kuzma to get her side of the story or to discuss any possible policy that she could have, I'm sure unintentionally violated or offer her the opportunity to make changes before being yanked out of her class in front of her students? Was that in the best interest of the teacher or the students? I'm wondering if Mrs. Kuzma had any previous marks in her file or any reported disciplinary issues where her professionalism could have been questioned. Most importantly, where is due process for a respected teacher and mentor of our community? I'm also a member of the Dexter Wellness Center and noticed this winter that Catherine was no longer teaching her classes where she impacted so many in the community as a group fitness instructor for numerous years, and that was another thing I'm assuming that was torn away from her. I'm not sure that that was fair or necessary. How come I can name more than half a dozen good people that this sort of thing has happened to in the last few years? Innocent until proven guilty seems to be thrown out of the window and people in various capacities in the community have been ostracized and their names slandered and they aren't even given the opportunity to defend themselves. Yes, multiple people being banned from school premises by administration, gag orders being put in place, their rights, it seems to me, have been violated and we need to take a look at the procedures in place and see if the handbook is followed correctly and how we might be able to improve in the future. I have one final question. We encourage our students to be respectful of each other, but are we turning a blind eye when it doesn't come from the top down? Like I mentioned before, I taught in this district, I had a lot of respect for Dexter Community Schools. I'm not just some outsider throwing out complaints, I'm very concerned and I'm looking for answers and how to improve moving forward. Some of you may not be privy to all the history, but we, we need to take a good look in the mirror and make sure that we are treating our district employees with respect and be sure that policies are in place to do the same and that the policies are followed so that quality teachers like Catherine Kuzma aren't targeted and our community loses out on exceptional role models. I ask that you just do your part to hold everyone accountable to the community of Dexter, so that we can take steps forward toward toward, uh I'm sorry, excuse me, so that we can take steps back toward the Dexter's many schools of old that were well respected and revered by so much.
Thank you.
I'll be short, because I don't have anything written down. They've summed it up pretty well, uh but I can say I'm Erica Ward and uh I have a twenty-three-year-old daughter who graduated from Dexter, a twenty-year-old also, and then I have two children with me here today uh in eleventh and eighth grade, both taught by Catherine Kuzma and here to show support for her. Um we're from this area and my husband actually played football for Dexter, makes it when I say that, and graduated in ninety, and so that's, that's my background, I guess, really, I'm here as a witness, my daughter Amelia was in the classroom when she was abruptly removed. And I've asked many times what was going on and she was, students were upset about it, it created anxiety. There was a lot of rumors spilling about and I just, I don't know what the procedure is, but it seems like just some sort of statement should be made other than rumors flying around and not being substantiated, students asking questions and teachers not necessarily denying it or, or affirming it, but just it was a lot of anxiety for them and it just seems like that should be a concern, what, what is the process? So aside from the fact that I think what's happening with Catherine is wrong, I think the way it's been handled is wrong and I know personally it has affected my children. That's the little I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Julie Simons, um I have three daughters in the district, my oldest graduated two years ago, twenty-three. I have an eleventh grader and a sixth grader, and I won't take a lot of your time, I just wanna thank you for listening and appreciate all that you do for school. And um I just wanna echo everyone else's comments that Catherine Kuzma has been a huge encouragement, primarily to my oldest daughter. Um she had her for two weeks in eighth grade, um as she was coming back from maternity leave, um but then she got to know her when my daughter led sorry, the Dread Not Christian Athletes Group um at the high school. And so Catherine had emailed my daughter, like many, many other students, very encouraging emails, which I have sent to you, so you have on file. Um I'm gonna read this just because I'm not good at talking out the cuff, um so Catherine, where was I? She also spent time with Bethany and just encouraged her in the ways I think we would want Dexter students to be encouraged with. Um she helps Bethany to develop a positive self-image, she inspired her to pursue leadership opportunities in college. Um and she is just a rare jewel of a teacher that goes above and beyond, but is expected to develop and inspire her students. Um like others have said, I do not feel that Catherine has been given due process in this situation. Um I have full confidence that Catherine would follow the rules if she was given the chance. Um and it just has devastated me that in addition to the fact that her job has been taken away, um I feel like she has been publicly humiliated first by being pulled away from her students and then also by the news that has gone to our entire community. And we have taken away both of her sources of income. She's um been taken away the ability to interact with students even outside of school. Um she was a part of one of the local youth groups, she is no longer attending that from what I have heard. Um she cannot participate in any sort of athletics throughout the district. Um and so through all of this, I feel like we have taken away her dignity in our small town where we are all closely connected as parents and neighbors and friends. Um I don't think that any of us can say that we are perfect and I would like everyone here tonight to put themselves in Catherine's shoes. Think about how you would like to be treated and handled and I think that we could have done a better job in this situation. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak with us tonight? Yeah, absolutely.
I'm Jill Demazos and I'm Dexter resident um for about twenty years, me moving here like most of the people, I think just for the school. And uh my oldest is twenty, my baby is a junior and oh he's here. But um we were, have been blessed in many ways by Catherine, so my boys um are not star athletes, they're not A-plus students, but they are typical Dexter kids that tolerate going to school, get ABs, don't get in trouble, just kinda ride that line. Um Catherine, to be honest, was the first teacher that took interest, particular interest in them, knew their name when we would go into conferences, could tell us actually something they're doing, and as a mom, that's super, super important, that's, that's what, we, we wanna hear something special about our kids. Um she, and she has continued that since middle school, she sent, sent them nice letters, um sent them supportive things, gone to a couple sporting events. Um but I know, we've heard enough about that. The other thing I, that struck me when you were sitting here, I get to spend time with Catherine on Sunday nights, I think, in front of people. Um on Sunday nights, I get, I did get to, I was, you know, a few months. Um and a lot of us moms would just kind of sit around, you know, what are you doing this week, what are you going, oh I've got this, just kinda prepping for the week. Catherine was always excited about her week. She never was like, I hope we have two snow days, or I, I, I don't know, I can't even give you an example, she never complained. She loved being in this district, she loved being with the kids, she loved doing her job, she loved supporting the kids. Um and there's not that many teachers that I could say, that I have heard just go on and on, you know, she'd be excited about growing drills. That's something that we need to just take into account, um it, it's a blessing that we don't, that we can't fight it. That's it, I need to fill out one of those green boards.
Only if you want to, only if you want a response.
Oh, I don't.
Okay, if you don't need a response, then you don't have to. Yep.
My name is Cooper Wiley, um I'm a junior, I've lived here my whole entire life. Um I've known Miss Kuzma since middle school, she taught me in my gym class and I was looking at previous texts from her um cause she um knows me personally and I also know her personally, um she says, hey Cooper, I hope this text finds you well. I asked your mom's permission and she said, it's great if I can text you. So that's how she got my number, I have, uh I go to the same church or certain, and she participated in supporting our youth group. I have been on many mission trips and also retreats with her, I've been on a seventeen-hour car ride with her down to Tennessee to help people fix roofs and I was in the front seat talking to her, a bowling parrot trip. Never once have I ever questioned anything she's ever said to me, she's always been positive, she sends me happy birthday texts and I'm always glad when I see your texts come across my phone. Um I hope that you guys look into this and don't just say something because someone says so, thank you.
Thank you.
Um my name's Rob, the, I um resident district, we had a couple's kids that graduated from here quite a while ago, probably circa Catherine slash Kuzma. Um so I administered school craft college, um over some faculty there, so I had a pretty strong feeling about where you guys are at, being the board administrator in the situation you guys are in. I provided a letter of support for Catherine, um and hopefully you've had a chance to see that, I'm not sure if that's been shared with you as yet. But I just wanted to take a little excerpt from that. Excellent educators try to empower and inspire students better themselves. Catherine is a passionate and authentic person who pushes herself and her students to achieve excellence in all aspects of their lives. If we were selecting educators to teach in our, our children, or any children in our community, Catherine would be at the top of the list. It's been our joy to follow Catherine's journey from high school student to dedicated educator and coach. Um I had lived as a coach in Dexter for seven years, um back when she was in high school. Um so we've known them, uh her and her family for a long time. Um she's a loving, caring mother, committed and compassionate mentor, strong contributor to our church and our community. Catherine's an outstanding role model for our students. Fellows, educators, and community members, we're confident that she will follow, will continue to inspire and positively influence many more students in the years to come. Our community needs teachers like Catherine. Our community needs teachers like Catherine, who are enthusiastic about their profession and engaged in developing youth in Dexter. That's my letter. That's part of it anyway. And what I'll just say is that I know that, I think the first speaker, Kristi, mentioned that there are two sides to everything, and I've seen that in the education world. I've been on both sides, and we get it. But at the same time, there's a, there's a right and wrong, because Catherine is right.
Thank you. Anyone else who'd like to speak with us tonight? Yep.
I've been staying, and I've lived in Dexter for over twenty years. I have three kids. All of them are in the Dexter schools. Two of them have been taught by Catherine. One is a fourth grader, and so I'm hoping that he still has the opportunity for that. I know Catherine professionally and personally. I work at the Dexter Wellness Center with her, or, and so I knew her before she became a teacher at Dexter Schools, and I was very excited that my kids would have the opportunity to have the experience of being taught by her. Both of my kids always talk about how much they care about her, how she's an amazing teacher, how she has impacted them in positive ways in that middle school experience that can be pretty challenging, the shift to and through. Both of my older two kids have found that middle school is kind of the place where dreams go to die. You love school, then all of a sudden, it's not great anymore because it's hard, right? And socially, it's awkward. And I know for both of my kids, that was a place for them to go to for her classes, to, that she meets them where they are. You go in, walk around, you can move or not in those classes, right? You don't have to be a certain thing. And I also got to be a guest teacher in her classes as a yoga instructor, and so witnessed how she interacted with students. How when they came in, a lot of them could kind of relax their shoulders, know they were in a place where they could get a break from it all, and to, and however they needed to do that. And so my daughter wasn't in the class when she was removed, but she was an active student, and so all of a sudden said, "I don't know where Miss Kuzma is anymore." Do you know where Miss Kuzma is? Do you, do you think she's okay? Do you think she's sick? Do you think somebody in her family is sick? And then she saw her out in, in the real world and wasn't, wasn't given any sort of information other than it's great to see you, and I'm sorry that I can't be there. My daughter saying, "Well, I don't understand, like, why can't she, like, is everything okay?" And I'm saying to her, "I don't know, but we saw her, and she looks okay, and I hope that everything is okay." And the substitute teachers, who I know they do their best, but it's not a substitute for Catherine. And I know that my daughter was negatively impacted in the fact that that class is no longer, and Catherine is not there. She doesn't know what's going on, and she's hearing stuff from other kids, right? That's not true. That's not accurate, and I think that's devastating for my children, I think for Catherine, I think for us as community members. And so I am hoping that whatever trajectory that this is moving towards, that it is pulled back and it is pulled back safely.
Thank you. I just want to, I don't have anything written down, so I'm just gonna kind of speak real quick. My name is Sherilyn Sherrill. I live in Dexter Schools, in the community of Dexter Schools. My son graduated from Dexter. And I just want to ask that, when do you guys think about your school teachers? What do you think about? For me, I think about the school teacher who encouraged me the most. I grew up in Adrian, graduated from Adrian High School, and for me, that's Mr. Nestak. He was my band teacher, and he went above and beyond. He encouraged me. You know what? I, I was first chair symphonic clarinetist, my favorite. And Mr. Nestak gave me his own clarinet so that I could play. And I, I just think, like, he went, he, he met with me before school. He met with me after school. And I mean, because of his encouragement and because of other people's encouragement, Mrs. Beliger, she encouraged me outside of class. I, I'm a music teacher. I mean, these are the people who I remember. Now Catherine is very near and dear to my heart. And I just think, are, are we getting rid of people who are encouraging kids in their future majors? Are, are we wanting people who are only going to be inside of their school hours, never going to encourage our future musicians, our future English majors, because we're going to want people to only, "Oh, I can't, I can't say anything. I can't encourage a kid," because we, we don't want teachers, we're limiting ourselves. We're really going to limit ourselves, and we're going to limit our, our kids. I mean, I'm so blessed that I had, I mean, I would think, Mr. Doctor, Miss, that you would know these teachers that I'm talking about. You're, you're from Adrian. I, I'm so glad that I had those Adrian teachers that invested in my life. And I hope that you guys will rethink this because Catherine's one of the best. I mean, she's a person above and beyond character. If we were, if we were grading her a one out of a scale of one to ten, she's a fifteen. Actually, she's a twenty, or she's a hundred. I mean, she's the best. And we don't want to get rid of the best because of, I, I don't want people to look at the things that I've done wrong. I mean, I'm grateful my church still lets me volunteer and lead worship. You know, I mean, we're all imperfect people. You are all imperfect people, right? We're all. But thank God, we have God who loves us and who loves us. He's God, pray. So I just want you to think about that. Who is your favorite teacher? Are they the some part, or are they the people who want out of their way and help you? Thank you. Is there anyone else who's, who'd love to speak tonight? We appreciate all of you coming out to share your thoughts with us and to show your support, and we know that this is a lot of your time on a beautiful night, so thank you for, for being here. Thank you very much. We are going to move on now to administrative and board updates, starting with the superintendent. And I do not have anything for the board residents. Moving on to the agenda, we just have one of the calls tonight. That we approved the salary schedules for Man Union employees. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right, we do not have action items. We do not have discussion items. Second, public participation. Any board comments tonight? And we have no information items, which brings us to a series of closed sessions. We do need a motion and then a roll call vote to move into closed session.
I love that the Board of Education was in closed session for the purpose of discussing negotiations.
A second. And we need a roll call vote.
Mr. Spolway, I, Mr. Rizer, Angus.
And it is six forty. Watching you because you're keeping us on our toes. Okay, we'll pause for a second so that
the recording shut down.